Ladies and gentlemen, it's uh 4:00 PM. It's hard to break old habits. I'm a creature of habits, I'm sorry. Yeah, we are going to call to order the meeting today that was originally scheduled for last Tuesday, the sixteenth. Moved because of the weather. Now we'll call the meeting to order. This time I'd like to ask everyone if it would stand. Commissioner Granberry is going to give her an invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I'll hand it out.
Heavenly Father, we would like to thank you for this day, Lord. We would like to thank you for the blessings that you have stored upon in this city. Lord, we ask you to guide us, lead us, order our steps, that we may be good leaders to represent this place. Lord, we ask you to bless every human being in our house and bring peace to the world, Lord. Let them know that peace and understanding is the best thing and the best way to accomplish anything. We ask you to order our steps in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in its potential. Thank you very much. Okay, the clerks, you'll call the roll, please.
Granberry?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Blanketip?
Here.
And Mr. White?
Here.
All present.
Commissionsers present, none absent. We'll start the business. The approval of correction of minutes from the prior meeting, December nineteenth, twenty seventeen. Any correction or additions to the meeting?
I've read over them there and I don't see any absolute approval.
No approval, they're seconded. Duly seconded, all in favor signify. Say aye. If it's like time, the minutes have been approved. Item five, awards, presentations, appointments. Do we have anything here that we need to?
It's totally a team, Mayor. We've got opening up the planning commission, you've got received the letter of the power system, and then the recreation commission.
Okay, I'll start with the recreation commission. You were there for the meeting?
Yes.
Those members all indicated they wanted to be reappointed.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're doing.
Definitely. So it would be Ms. Grooms, Commissioner Blanketip, Lou M. Williams, Lindsay Howe, and Larry Paxton, when I miss the manager.
And they expire?
They will expire. They expire this month. If they are approved, they'll be three-year terms.
Okay. It'll be my pleasure, then, to appoint these five people for another term since they decide to have that term on the table. Recreation committee, at this time, I'd have a vote for ratification, please. Salute. On favor, signify. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Voting. She should have the notice, she should have signed on her vote. Okay, those appointments are approved. Now, now, let's vote with one abstention. Mount Pleasant Power System was merely a note that from the director, Mr. Kirsten, that Mr. Mike Tyler's term will expire in March. He would like to be reappointed. We'll address that at the proper time. The other Mount Pleasant Planning Commission, we have one resignation. The vice chairman, Mr. Mickey Warren, resigned, and the term of Mr. Ed Brenn will expire in February.
February.
So this time I'm not-
And Mr. Douglas Marshall is expired this month.
Goodness gracious, this month. Okay, well, this time, then, I'm going to appoint, reappoint Mr. Douglas Marshall to the Mount Pleasant Planning Commission, subject to ratification.
Yes, sir, salute.
The news for second?
Second.
Seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor of Mr. Marshall's reappointment, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Like time, that Mr. Marshall can be reappointed. Would you know that? Item six, completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting.
Not aware of any.
I'm not aware of any. Item seven, monthly report from Mayor, you've all been waiting.
Yes.
I didn't, don't have anything, really, to report, other than I will make a report today. I thought we had a very, very progressive meeting with the Leadership Murray class and a group of people, some being from Murray County, but mostly from other counties called the GADIS group. They're very similar to the Leadership Murray. They actually came here last year, and they're named after a former county mayor who was killed in automobile wreck. I think that the presentation that was made was so appropriate. I think that the eyes were open about Mount Pleasant, what we're trying to do, where we are. We didn't overstate anything. We can make it better than it was. It's an old flower. We made the fact that we do have problems, and what we do are trying, and we presented a private-public relationship to them, and I think it was very well received. You may want to say something about it.
No, I just, I would hear what you say, that I think they heard what we had to say, and we didn't bore the tears, and they got it, and they all were allowed to go walk up and down the street and shop for about an hour or two, so.
The shops got to do it.
Bill, you spoke, participated in that, too. He's a former Leadership Murray graduate, and what did you think about it?
I thought it was great.
I don't want to tell you this well, well.
I did, too. And Mount Pleasant got recognized in the way we wanted to, and see the way we did. I think they were right.
I thought that. Vice Mayor White made a very strong suggestion that this group picked the skyhook as their project.
Yes.
I think we'll come out to good with that meeting.
They would be the favorite class.
There's probably sixty-plus people there, I would say.
Yeah, the class has thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, then that was-
Yes. I think as far as the meal, it's seventy people.
Seventy people, wow.
It's all equal.
The other thing, I am still working on sidewalks. It's a very interesting thing. It blows your mind to see what has been done here and what hasn't been done here. I see no rhyme or reason why a sidewalk is gone through two, maybe two, maybe two yards and quits. I mean, just quit like it's just, you know, that's where we stop.
You can be walking on it.
It's really a hell.
Especially when you're on the ballot.
Anyway, I'll keep on working on that, and then we'll have some kind of report for what we do, prioritize what we'd like to do.
Mayor, if you're interested, we can add that to things on the agenda for the town hall meeting. You know, we're going to talk about mowing, brush pickup, and if there's residents that have feelings about sidewalk progress.
It'll be fine.
Okay.
That's about it, basically, all I have. If I'm going to leave something, I might bring you up an opportunity to say a little something. Number eight, monthly financial budget report.
Good evening. We've actually started with the gas and the sanitation, the rate study. I actually have been sending information, some quantitative information today related to our budget, our depreciation schedules, and so they'll probably be asking us more information, and they said it would take about two months for them to fully complete the study. So we have begun and sent some information requested. So right now, we're just looking for them to start working on it and see what else. I'm sure as they work on it, they will be coming back to us. I know the last time that was kind of the way it went. We gave them this initial bunch of information, and then they come back to us with specific questions on procedures and rates and how we do things. So it will be forthcoming in the next couple of months, finalize that study, and we think that, so, that will help us in determining that we are charging our customers the correct amount, and if not, they'll be making recommendations on where those weaknesses are and what we can do to rectify those. That might be, might be the case of some of, for one thing, we were looking at is our overall, the cost of to connect, or connection fee. We think they're lower than, they are lower than most everybody around, and, but we have postponed, postponed making any adjustments until we got the results of this rate study to make sure we did, we did the proper amount. So we're looking forward to that progressing. The fourth month of December, about halfway through the year, and we're, budget-wise, we're right on target. Our department's holding within their, where they should be this point in the year. The, actually, the collections, our property tax collection, were up a little bit this year over last year. Last year, they were a little bit slower coming in, but this year, they've come in a little bit quicker, and of course, we always like to see that. And of course, there's two times on property taxes you will get the big bulk. One will be right around the end of December. That's where they get, we get a lot of our property taxes from mortgage companies that have taken escrow out of people's mortgages throughout the year, and they generally will pay right at the end of December their property taxes. And then again, you'll have another surge right there at the end, around the end of February. So those are your two biggest collected months in property taxes. Our cash balances remain steady. Excuse me. General fund, we have a total of one point eight million. The water operating account, it's eight hundred seventy-three thousand, and the total cash count, excluding customer deposit, at three point two million. The gas fund has their checking and CD balances, they exclude, again, excluding customer deposit of a little over two million. That concludes our report. Do you have any questions?
If all of them have a motion to approve, most of them.
Okay, most of them may have accepted the report, too. Seconded, duly seconded. Any further discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If it's like time, that natural report has been accepted. Number nine, monthly report to City Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, all the monthly reports are in your packet, and I believe Loretta's has sent email separately, correct? So you should have all those, and I put all those together to make the State of the City, that'll be out first of February and available online.
Questions? Chief, can I answer about anything? Why she coughed the flu, why she squated?
Hey, I do have a suggestion, and it came from one of your city boys, and I don't know if she answered it or not. Is there a way to be closed, because of the snow over, and that to have on the recording?
She did. I believe that there is a way to do that. We need to do, were you working on that, Chief?
Yeah, I called Spencer today, but he hasn't called me back.
Well, we did that at the county, and just took, actually took the line out of my office.
Yeah, it's got to be a way to do it. Sometimes they're just doing a voicemail.
Yeah, and the employee could actually get up in the morning and call.
Call it in, yeah.
And call it in, it would be recorded, and see how it was closed, or see how it all went down.
Because the phone does ring off the head of the key.
Yeah, I know it was working, and so that was funny. My brother came up here to pay his bills, and he went out of work, and he said, came in, my house. I said, I don't work there.
They have a place he can put his money, though.
Yeah, well, he had cash, and he didn't want to leave the cash, you know, and I'm planning to just do, you know, get a receipt, it was just convenience, and so if you are working up here, the phone doesn't ring up.
Yeah, we're working on that, it should be possible.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Chief, can I answer? Number ten, special reports from other city departments committees. Have anything on that, or water?
No, we don't. We're still waiting, you know, for rural development with the February first date looming, hopefully.
Number eleven, new business. Number eight, resolution two zero one eight dash one, a resolution by the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Police Department inventory of surplus property, authorizing the sale of this surplus property. You want to give us again what that property was?
Sure. Mayor, Commissioners, we do the surplus property usually two or three times a year, but this particular resolution is covering three police vehicles, one extremely old backhoe, Inco Works, and a nineteen ninety-nine pickup truck, Inco Works, and if this resolution is passed, we follow our policy, which is we put them on GoDeals dot com and sell them to the general public.
Any further questions to come?
Any questions about the equipment, we're ready to answer them.
All in favor of the resolution? Yeah, make the motion to do that. Dates made, the motion duly seconded, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If it's like time, that resolution is passed. B, resolution two zero one eight dash two, a resolution adopting the policy, raising the system comments at public meetings for the City of Mount Pleasant, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Mayor, Commissioners, Mayor and I talked about this. This placard's been hanging at this back door for years, and it talks about the rules and how many minutes the public gets, and we decided that if this is the wish of the commission, that we needed to reduce this into the form of a resolution, and that's what this resolution accomplishes. You can amend it any way you want, but we're basically saying that what is imposed is what our practice is.
Comments? Chair, Lieutenant, resolution, please. Motion? Salute. A move for adoption is seconded. Duly seconded. Ms. Blanketip? Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If it's like time, that resolution is passed. Resolution two zero one eight dash three, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, approving Tyler Technology Software to serve to the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Mayor, Commissioners, we're currently using Allen software, and we're not happy with it at all. We've had quite a few problems with it, and the police department wants to go with Tyler Technologies, which is something that is used by many, many law enforcement agencies. It has a good reputation on the law enforcement side. We have to give Allen sixty days' notice, which we have done, and the Tyler Technologies is a five-year agreement.
It is.
So with eighty pages, I hope you all read it. If you have any questions, Chief would be happy to answer them.
Cory read it.
Cory read all of it.
Cory read it.
She sent us the briefing.
I'll be brief with a quick story about this. I've been in Allen, Huntsville this weekend, and we met a gentleman there with a company called TKY, and they are a company that simulates information and puts it back out to these software companies like Kissimmee. And I said, we're having trouble with ours, and he named off the name of it, and he said, I bet y'all are going to Tyler. And it was just one of those, ran into them, they were there for a conference in Huntsville, you know, all the techie stuff they got going on there.
Oh, yeah.
And he said, he said, it's the worst company we work with.
Tyler's all over the United States.
Yes, that's what he said.
They go from coast to coast.
But he's there consistently.
Yeah, consistently bad.
Allen.
He called him, he said, Allen, he said, I get it.
Tyler's not good there.
No, Tyler's not bad, no.
Yeah.
Did you see where the electricity went out? Is that the company? It's on the news, that the software company, electricity went out.
That's not good.
Anybody have a battery pack?
So I'd move approval for that.
Motion to approve, and duly made, duly seconded. Further discussion, if anyone? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? No. Motion, resolution is passed. Item B, ordinance first reading, and ordinance to amend, ordinance two zero one seven dash one zero zero five, said ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning June one, two thousand seventeen, ending June third, two thousand eighteen, providing effective date.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the second budget amendment we have in front of you for this fiscal year. Upon final passage in February, there will be a third at the very end of the fiscal year to clean up any loose ends, but you should have a sheet that lists all the different funds that are impacted by this, and, you know, you can go, basically, we get grants, we amend the budget with the new income, we had additional expenses with the census, the agreement on the Boy Scout hut, the TCAT expenses that went over, the liability insurance that was increased. I'm hitting the big numbers here. The downtown CT consultants agreement, which is five thousand more than anticipated, and part of that is a result of going from one fiscal year to the next. It's a little confusing following the expenditures of a long-term agreement. New trash cans is something that we added at the last minute because Steve is out of trash cans. We were able to go back to the company that provided these trash cans, is it three years now, three years ago, two and a half?
A month, yeah.
That is matching the exact same price. So there's no need for us to bid that out because we're getting the same price that we got two and a half years ago, and our concern was, we wanted them to look exactly the same, where we didn't have different shades of blue and that, and so we'll have the exact same trash cans, and that is eighteen thousand five hundred, which Loretta believes that we're safe in the sanitation fund with the budget amendment.
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
Interesting how they survive this cold.
Yeah, we do have some issues with some.
You know, they've done really well, if we've got out, let's see, we've got, he says, we've got out almost around seven, four hundred, I've got about thirty.
Jesus, what they're doing.
That's heavy, right? I called you when I asked you about the price of the trash cans, and he said, gather them all up, and I'll take a picture of them, and get them covered up. But I gotta get my three hundred to put the third year, twenty-five out.
Part of the deal.
Well, I was a deaf in Florida, in Columbia, that's a very pale orange color, that looks like a-
Looks brown to me.
That's the one.
And this is their parks cold, their truck. This is a good time for us to be getting these, too, because as Loretta mentioned earlier, we're doing the gas and sanitation audit, and I promise you, there will be some changes you're going to want to make in sanitation, just in simple our practices, but there's no reason for us to be doing anything until the study's done.
Further discussion on this?
Very, I miss the police department, the doors, the bay doors, and the software, that's part of this budget. I just, I try to hit the highlights of the higher expenses, but I think that's it.
Yeah, those bay doors.
They haven't worked in how long?
We've got three downstairs that don't go up or down at all.
Oh, and police department, I was thinking, yeah, okay, yeah.
They've been there since the building was-
Yeah, I'm, I was thinking, sorry.
They haven't worked that long?
No.
Well, it's been, one of them hasn't worked in five years.
It's catchy, it needs to go up and down sometimes.
But they're so, no, it's drug fund.
Okay, drug fund, money's paid for that.
Sale of military equipment.
Okay.
That's really company handy.
And yet they, they do use your light.
Oh, yeah, they, when we, we do an annual inspection of all of our essential units, and we did find one man unit that sits over Sonia and Roberts, and so that whole unit had to be replaced, and that was not expected.
They're all upper.
The two of them fight about cold and hot, but that had nothing to do with the system going down.
What brand new did you replace it with?
Was it a train?
Yeah, Jacob Patterson got the bid, we got three bids.
No, I don't think it was a train. The train represented to come with one of them, but-
I don't know.
We'll climb up on the roof, it's on the invoice, I just don't remember what it is.
Get up there, Steve.
Right after the vote, I want to ask a question. Do you have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion to approve on the first reading?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is it seconded? I'll second it. Duly seconded, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If it's like time, ordinance is approved for a reading. I guess that brought something to my mind, that I slipped, didn't tap foot down right now. Has the city ever done an energy audit in this field?
Not that I'm aware of.
The train is, that's what made me think of it. The train did, been doing extensive things. It was to start out in school system, and then they did it in the court.
I was at the county commission meeting last week when they were talking about that, yeah.
And different things. That might be something we want to look into.
Our windows.
Yeah, if you can replace our front window.
Our windows, you can feel the cold sitting in the cage. Just come in here.
Front windows are potato. Front windows in this building are potato.
Yeah.
Just come in on a cold day to take to my office one, and just go walk up to the deck.
And we did get bid for it, and, you know, if there's money left over at the end of the fiscal year, something we could do, but it's just, we didn't budget for it.
Well, let's look at having, just doing, someone doing energy audit for us, and say, maybe even things replacing the lighting, the LED lighting and so forth, you could pay for itself, and guarantee the savings that you don't, you don't, you don't pay.
Right. Just out of curiosity, because I don't know, is that something that you pay for the audit, or do they do the audit for you? I'm hoping to get your business.
It depends on who does it. You can, you can-
I know, I work with a company very closely, called Oresco, they're out of Atlanta, Georgia. As a matter of fact, Hickman County's getting ready to spend a billion set, and it has a nine-year payback on the billion set of all new LED lights, like you're talking about, Mayor. They even look at the registers where you've got, where your heating and cooling, they look at the heating and cooling, they look at, I mean, they do it all, and then they bring back the proposal, and you can accept any or all. And a lot of that money is tax exempt, so you get a very good rate on it, and you have the bar to do it, because it is part of the community, so you get a tax exempt rate, which is much lower on the bar. But they, that's, that's all they do.
And then we look at city halls, the Inco Works, gas, and waters.
They did everything.
Like, I can tell you what they're going to say, but waste water, but.
Well, somebody's not faithful, but that might be one of the, it would be a good thing, I think, for us to look at. If you can do it, we can-
I think if we got the electric system, I think TBA sometimes, then I'm talking-
TBA does, and they, they'll do commercials, I don't want to do that, I know they do commercial residential, but they have some real good problems, but it's, uh-
We'll look into that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Item C, excuse me, item E, the approval of the write-off report.
Were there any questions left? You all had a chance to take a look at that write-off report, and we're going to try and get it to you several times a year, rather than many years at one time.
Yeah, this is just a person, just basically, number hundred eighty days. It was quite large, honestly, larger, a little bit larger than what I expected, but we went through those, the list, had a couple of staff to go through the list, see if there's any that we could, thought we might potentially be able to collect. We did that, and we've actually transferred a few over to active accounts, and we're going to be collecting some of them. A couple of them I've got agreements to collect ten dollars a month. My feeling on that was, we collect that much, then we won't have to go turn it over to collections, and won't lose the forty percent collection fee if we sell.
I'll tell you, the other good thing about that is, too, that makes the person who is not able to pay the whole thing feel good about themselves, and it makes me feel good for them that they do that. If we customize things that help people, I think it's part of the duty of the board to do that.
But if we see cooperation, we're always willing to-
Absolutely. Got to do, these times, even though they're, I mean, the best financial times we've had, since the old high letdown, they're still not back to where they need to be, and a lot of people struggle. It's very easy to forget about.
Especially when you get the single-digit temperatures and all that kind of stuff, yeah. So all I need, I really need a formal motion accepting the write-off report as presented.
I make a motion to accept the write-off report as presented.
That motion been duly seconded? Duly seconded, any further discussion, I'm going to write off the board. All in favor, signify by saying aye. If it's like time.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
That motion, that is accepted.
With that, Kate, you said the single digits helped, I don't know if anyone from water, and that, how do we fare with, we talked about leaks, water they came out last Thursday, is it getting even colder? How do we fare with that, with the residential and city water leaks and that?
We did, we have found several. We're struggling a bit with one of the springs, where we feel like maybe a dam's been compromised, and we're working on that now, but we clearly weren't ready for the single digits for any length of time, because we had to do a lot to, and we're still doing it, I mean, we're still, it's not as bad as it was last week, but we're still finding leaks, and we know that there's a little bit more out there.
And the gas company, you've heard?
Oh, yeah, nothing wrong, yeah.
How many, how many episodes would you say, major episode, happened again? I've only seen one myself, right around, that was where it looked like it was major.
I mean, I could, I can honestly say daily, daily, for the, for over, of course, we're about seven working days, but I wouldn't-
The yard, of the fault of the city, I mean, were they responsible?
The ones that I'm talking about were specifically, the, they were city lines or or city valves that went bad because of the cold. And the residents did have some problems too, we helped where we could, but I, I'm speaking specifically about the city.
And maybe where in the street?
In the street, in spring, the springs were a real problem. We did, we did find a couple, found one right out there near the water plant as well. So it's just kind of all up the map.
And what happened to those, that information? Where does that go? We've had it, we've gone through it, and it was traumatic, but what has done with that information?
Well, we're, we're keeping track of that on, on the computer. There's probably a backlog right now to enter, but yeah, we have to keep track of all that because anytime we're, anytime we're breaking into the ground, we're finding something and we have to track that. They're mapping all of that, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve, general comments from citizens. There are a couple of citizens here, not three citizens in here with us. Anybody have anything you'd like to call, or sign up? Thank you for coming out, it's off the call. Thank you for coming. Okay, any other comments from any commissioners before we adjourn?
Yeah, it was about our sign, do we need to, it hadn't changed, so we don't need to publish, we don't need to be.
I'll hang this back up and it hasn't changed. We just felt there needed to be a formal acknowledgement.
Since we didn't change it, it doesn't need to be re-published.
I'll be sending more information out, but just want to remind you all about the town hall next Thursday at six o'clock at the community center. I know the mayor's going to be going to the Elias annual meeting too.
If you do change that at all, put on that document.
Okay.
Come about.
Okay.
It's not been two before.
You've had your chances.
You took my fire. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, please. Some move, duly seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye, say aye.
Appreciate your flexibility, Senator Dan, thank you.
I wasn't going to.
Yeah.
Can we give my email back? I get it. I was just saying. I was just saying. I was just saying. No, I was just saying. I was just saying. No, I was just saying. I was just saying. No, I was just saying. I was just saying. No, I was just saying. I was just saying. No, I was just saying. 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 If you speak, you can get a little more dark. I didn't speak so hard. I got two to make it.
About you, as I say, that's going down the yellow path.
I think you're a business. Why? Sorry, I just. Why? Why? I'm not for me, I can't. I was THP, we can't.
It goes in the computer, right?
Unless you try to.
The only person that can help her would be this young gentleman sitting in his black robes over there.
The car was, the car was, the car was. Yeah, and I was supposed to go to court yesterday.